At six thirty. Let's open for the budget. My budget allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Welcome all. Trustees had a chance to look at the bills. Is there a motion to approve the bills?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Who loved the July ninth twenty twenty-five meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the July meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
I just stated, because I wasn't here, but state.
Under the mayor's report, we've all got, like I do every meeting, I I tell us public members in the public where we are with all our grants. First one's for the park, the new pavilion. The old pavilion was knocked down. It's gone. In a dumpster at the park. We had to get it down pretty quickly because the contractor who's going to be putting up the new pavilion had to have time to pour new concrete for the slab and the piers.
Same size as?
What's that?
It's gonna be the same size as you had?
Oh, it's in the same footprint. It's more of a more hexagon, hexagon shape. Little, not quite a bit taller. So it's gonna be really nice.
It's the same shape, yeah. Size.
The Nicerda Pond by fifty-seven thirty-seven grant, we've been informed that we are granted that grant to receive it. We're just finalizing some paperwork. We had LaBella Associates apply to the CFA on behalf of our village and the town for a joint comprehensive plan study. And that was submitted and now we're awaiting notification. Bastion York grant was awarded to the village for our electric infrastructure. That continues to be administered by Municipal Solutions with assistance from Courtney. And our, and our VC grant, the Northern Border Regional Council, that's in the amount of a million dollars. And it's being evaluated to see if it could fund infrastructure repairs, replacements to the wastewater collection system. So. And the village will also apply for a community development block grant, which would cover the village's matching fund requirement for this grant. We physically do not have the money to match a grant, so that's why that would be really important to obtain. Still waiting for our DOT to do their signage up on Buffalo Road. They're supposed to be switching some signs around, changing some lit distances, and we're still waiting for that. If they ever do that, I want to get my speed radar sign put back up. But until they do their signage, we have to maintain so many feet away from their signs. And there's gotta be so many feet in between their signs to be legal, so we're still waiting on that. Virgin Harvest Market continues through September, so we have three more Tuesdays. So I wanted everyone to spread the word. Been doing pretty well. It's a nice benefit for the community. And we spread the word so we can get people there, keep it going. Summer rec concluded another very successful year at the Hickory Park for the kids this summer. Soup Co., as far as our roads, they did crack sealing, they're gonna be back. Crack sealing, the remainder of the roads that weren't crack sealed, when are they coming back?
They were here this morning.
This morning, okay. So they'll be doing the rest of the roads that didn't get crack sealed. We have a contractor scheduled to mill and pave the Buffalo Street parking lot behind here.
I have updated, I have the dates now.
Okay.
So I'm going to mill on the eighteenth, pave on the twenty-fourth.
Okay. Very good. We got some sidewalk replacements are scheduled probably in the middle of the month of October. Various locations throughout the village that are in need. We have contracted with Northline LLC to replace John Tucker, who retired after many years of service as our substation technician. We did have some problems just over a week ago with our substation kicking out. We lost complete power in that substation four different times. And we had to scramble to get somebody, a new contractor, in here to pick up where John left off. You'd say he was with us for a lot of years, he knew our system inside out. You could call him at two in the morning and he'd be on the phone, he'd pull our files out and he could tell you what had, what had to be done and how to do it if we could do it in-house, so. But we've got another now, he's a good contractor now, I've gone way back with him also. And I'm very confident with them. So they're gonna be involved now with our new up, our substation upgrade as far as getting that all online, testing everything, getting the relays and settings and all that in place. So it's very important that we have somebody, and now we do. And I'll be attending the semi-annual NIPA meeting, New York Municipal Power Authority meeting, and the annual MUA meeting, which is the Municipal Electric Utilities Association annual meeting, and that's being held in Verona, New York, October first through the third. So I'll be attending those meetings on the village's behalf. And that's what I got. Courtney, what do you got?
Okay, well, on my report right there, you know, I just had a chance to read it, just a couple of things. We had, got three point four million dollars in for the electric substation. And we immediately moved that to our night class account. Getting, so while it's in there, we're getting about four point two percent. Which is a great. Sort of figuring about eleven, twelve thousand dollars a month of interest. Yep.
How long will that go for?
Um, a ban is for a year, then we'll roll it over. Either to another ban, probably another ban, by the way the project keeps going, or longer financing. The Grant Joe talked about, the Nicerda Pond grant, I had an online conference call today with Municipal Solutions and Nicerda. It went really well, so we have all the paperwork handed in and they're satisfied, so we won't need to have a meet again for, until the spring and start to move forward. Just a couple of dates to keep in mind, have the Trumpet Tree or Hallow's Eve Festival is October eighteenth. Hickory Park and Mount Ross Cemetery. And our tree lighting ceremony is Monday, December eighth. Besides that, if anybody has not made it to the farmer's market yet, I suggest you do it, so it's really, I think it's a great, great thing for the village. It's going really well. That's it for me, unless anybody has any questions on our report?
So are all the manholes that were leaking fixed now?
Or is? We, we did, what, three?
The ones that were here, Joe's property and over here?
Yeah, the ones we did are, are fixed now.
Okay, so the ones that we planned on doing are done?
Yes.
Okay. Are there more that have to be done?
There is a lot more that could be done.
Okay.
And that is part of that one million dollar grant here.
Yep.
Is if we get that in, the second grant, then we might be able to continue that work.
Okay.
Our CEO's EO report, you've all got a copy of that, any questions on any of this permits?
I got one from everyone, it's not on here, but I don't care. It'll show up next month probably. But I'll make a motion that we accept the CEO's EO report for July.
Okay, all their officers' reports.
Officer reports and all officers' reports.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Trustee concerns, or death?
I, I had a note that was actually on Courtney's report about the repairs to the catch basin at the corner of Mungar and Clinton. It's very nice.
Good, good.
Yeah, that was exciting.
Good to hear.
Because I think I had mentioned that before. I'm still hearing lots of racing of vehicles down the streets, I don't know if you guys are.
Oh, yeah.
I once hit a kid yesterday, literally right in front of me on one of those e-bikes.
Oh, thank God.
He was almost a downer. Right here on Roster Street, it was close. It was bad.
It's like, what do we do?
I don't know. It's everywhere.
Same thing we've said for years, call the police.
Yeah.
By the time they get here, the kids will be gone.
Yeah.
I said a nice word or two to them, but it's not gonna stop it.
Some of the, some of what I'm hearing is that e-bikes, there's, there's four-wheelers, there's trucks over here at the corner of McKenzie and Clinton.
I did put it in my newsletter about the e-bikes.
Yeah.
Everybody read that?
Yeah.
By law, you have to be sixteen years old to even operate an e-bike in New York State as a matter of class one, two, three. They are required to be sixteen years old, wear a helmet, not to ride them on the sidewalks, obey all the road rules, like if you're driving a car. Parents are buying these things for ten, twelve-year-old kids and go have fun.
The hot thing around the village, showing all the kids are getting them, so everywhere.
It's everywhere. Some of them, Steve Ollie had an article, he goes in the West Side News about them, you know, and people gotta, if you get educated on these things.
I do, I will say though, I have noticed a lot more kids wearing their helmets.
Helmets, I have noticed that too. I also saw the other day a kid on one of those, one that you sit down on the ground, and it was electric.
Yep.
That's the first I've seen that, so really low to the ground.
Like a go-kart?
No, smaller than that, not a go-kart.
Those hoverboards?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But when you sit on them?
Yeah, really low. And like, if he was in the street, you would not see him, you would have.
They shouldn't be in the street.
Yep. So then there's that.
Call the police.
And then I, I did mention, I think before the meeting started, that the water shot off on Mungar Street, totally unexpected.
Well, I don't worry if it even shut up.
They shut it off, I just happened to be home and working and tried to use the water with my hands full soap. And it was just annoying that they don't notify anybody, they didn't notify anyone on the street, whatever, it didn't last that long, but it was, it was one of those kind of annoyances. And then the spot on Mungar Street from where they fixed the water, are they gonna pave that, repave that again, is that the plan?
They're required to do that, yeah.
Oh, it's just gravel, so none of the gravel is like going all over.
Yeah, they should, they tore up next door to me also, and they put binder in there, but they haven't come back to put the top coat. Not to get off the subject, but I attended the firemen's meeting Monday night, just so you know how busy these guys are and what they do. They had ten calls in the village for August, they had twenty calls in the town, and it was a total of forty-two calls altogether. Mutual aid and RIGA, so, and that's pretty standard for, for a month, so we can't say enough for what the fire department does. Anything else, Brandon, that, trustee, Mike?
No, I, I don't, I had a couple of folks ask about the paving in the back, the steps up, going up to Morgans was kind of a, you know, they were asking if that was gonna be leveled out, and I assured them they would, I didn't know the details, so I appreciate that, all the updates and that kind of thing.
Maybe they shouldn't drink so much that they're sick, I don't know.
Well, I won't say it was who it was, Joe.
Okay. Okay. Todd?
Uh, no concerns, is it on? Everything looks good.
Uh?
I'm still continuing with the jake break stuff.
Okay.
When I talked to the county.
It's on our noise ordinance?
Yeah, they, when I talked to the county, she recommended that we buy a decibel level reader, she said they're around a hundred bucks, one that's weatherproof, put it out there on Tomlin Road, and, you know, go over three, four days of readings, and then set your decibel level under that so that you can, so that they have something to work with there. So if they, if they actually record somebody above the decibel level for our noise ordinance, they can actually give them a ticket, so. And that allows them to say, yes, we can put those signs out there for no, no engine break. So, but they won't do it until we give them a level of, of noise from our ordinance.
So they, like?
Because right now it's arbitrary.
They can't actually give a ticket from that, right?
They can get a ticket if we say our decibel level is here and they put a jake break on it, it's way up above it.
How do they know who it is?
They'll have to sit out there, just like a speed thing, they'll have to catch somebody hitting it. And so when they hit, so when they hit it and they record decibel level higher than what our ordinance says, they can give them a ticket.
But that's after there's a sign there, so they know they can't.
So it has to sign first, but they won't put the signs up until we get a decibel level added to our noise ordinance.
Okay. So we're gonna touch base on old business on the noise ordinance.
Yep, okay. So, yeah, and if we'll chat about it, but, you know, if, if it's something that I can go out and purchase and then get paid back for, I'd be glad to do that and set it up, so, but we'll talk about it.
All right, new business, Virgin Fire Department budget presentation. Floor is yours, gentlemen.
Thank you. So, I'm, as you all know, me, Eric Weiss, I'm one of the board directors for the fire department. These guys introduce themselves.
I'm Mark Swanson, the president, brand new president, making over from Eric, so I'm kind of learning the whole budget process as we go here. And?
I'm Dr. Pastor Al, Chair of the Board.
So, I'm sure everybody read the hundred and some pages I sent you, but not expecting it, but we, we've done this in past years, is, you know, let's try to be as transparent as possible about where we stand with the membership, with the department, with the finances. Last year, we, we didn't, I think everything was kind of a comfortable point, but this year is a little bit different. So we felt, you know, let's come up with a, a full rundown for both the town and the village, for them to kind of see where we stand. So, not gonna go through every aspect of the memo that I sent, just some, some key points. Obviously, we did a quick breakdown of the number of members that we have, currently eighty-eight. Kind of gave you the rundown of the, the status of the members, kind of what, what they're allowed to do. I will say of the eighty-eight, typically, I would say twenty-five is the, you know, do the bulk of the work, just how it is. But we do have, you know, quite a few members that have earned time as a life member, so. But eighty-eight, I would say is typical for us over the past few years, so it's been, been fairly consistent. And it is nice, we do have a pretty good run of, of young members, which is good to take over for field members eventually, if we can keep them in the village, in the town. So that's kind of been, obviously, a negative lately, it's just, you know, you get younger members trained up and they tend to leave the area, so. Call stats, you know, Joe kind of commented on, on some of the numbers you'll see here, fairly consistent over the years, between four hundred fifty and four hundred sixty-three since twenty-twenty-two. And the percentage of breakdown between the town and village, RIGA, mutual aid, has been pretty consistent as well, so, again, just to kind of give you a rundown. On page three of the memo, definitely one thing I want to point out and talk about a little bit more is, is our ladder truck, so Quint twenty-six. Had a ladder test inspection done last year, and the company outlined some severe corrosion on frame. So a big unexpected expense for us is to replace the entire frame on that truck. Thankfully, we were able to get a much more reasonable quote, the first two quotes we got were over six hundred thousand dollars to make the repairs. So we did get a quote for a little over two hundred thousand, we put some contingency in it from Kellogg Diesel to do the work, and that work is gonna be taking place pretty soon. So again, that's a, a big hit to our, kind of our long-term plans, I'll kind of go over where that hits a little bit later. Not gonna go into detail, but, you know, for your own reading pleasure, kind of gave you our, our twenty-twenty-four budget versus actual report, and our twenty-twenty-five through July thirty-first budget versus actual report. And those are really the, some of our key documents that we use as a, as a board to kind of figure out where we need to be for our, our twenty-twenty-six budgets.
I'm kind of surprised your fuel costs went down.
I think we, we escalated them in the past to take, you know, when COVID hit, we kind of bumped everything up, but I think what we're seeing is fuel costs are just going down. Call volumes are kind of staying the same, but we're just, the, the, the cost of the fuel itself is, is decreased, so. I will say, when you look at the twenty-twenty-five budget versus actual, the fuel costs are drastically down for one primary reason, we're getting rid of our fuel tanks, so we're emptying them. So we're gonna go to a card reading system, so we go to any, any fuel station, you know, and, and our membership will have a, a fuel card they can use to fill the trucks up, so. So that's why it's down drastically this year, it's just we're, we're emptying the tanks. So I do want to kind of point out our, our long-term plans, these are plans we, we, we put in place twelve, thirteen years ago, and, and the board updates them annually. First one is our long-term maintenance plan, this really covers big ticket items to our buildings and grounds, so our roofs, our generator, and we recently coated our, our floors and the truck bays, we're gonna put an investment of about twenty thousand dollars into our heating system in our, in, in the truck bay, they were installed in eighteen eighty-five, so they're at a point where they need to be replaced, so. We do have these plans in place, like I said, to make sure we have the funds to pay for these items without, without taking out a loan. And ultimately, with that, there's a, a percent increase that we put with each plan every year that gets correlated into the budget. So that's our long-term maintenance plan. The biggest one and the biggest share of our budget, which accounts to about thirty-four percent of our overall budget, is our vehicle replacement plan. Again, this one took a hit this year with the repairs to the Quint. But ultimately, main thing I want to talk about this is where we're headed with the future. This plan was set up primarily because we wanted to get out of the, out of the habit of taking out loans from the trucks. It was a huge financing expense, and we were making very good progress until COVID hit, I would say. The past two trucks we purchased, we were able to not take out, historically it was a ten-year loan, we were, we were able to make down payments, substantial down payments on trucks, and reduce those payments to about a six-year plan. But after COVID, I'll give you an example, our Engine Twenty-seven was purchased in twenty nineteen for five hundred forty thousand dollars. To buy that truck today, you're easily over one point one million dollars. So over the short period of time, they have skyrocketed. And honestly, I'm not even sure if that number is accurate, I talked to Churchville, guy from Churchville on, on Tuesday, and he said he just purchased one, it was one point three million. So, so ultimately, we're gonna be going through this plan a little more detail, again, it's really not reflected in this budget, because we haven't had the time to go through it yet as to what we're gonna do, do we consolidate trucks again? We did that a few years ago, where we, where we actually sold one of our trucks and kind of, so actually sold two of our trucks and blended into one. We are having those discussions again, but again, it's a, it's a factor of, you know, what do we, are we sacrificing any, any protection for the community? And we want to make sure we're, we're providing the best service we can, so. But that, that process is gonna kind of work its way out, I would say, over the next few months, maybe a little longer, but change obviously is a big thing for people, people don't like changing too much stuff. The major equipment plan is really for our key fire department piece of equipment, so our thermals, our cameras, cameras, when we have to buy a new large diameter hose, the Hurst tool, SCBA's. So again, we want to make sure we have those funds in place to, to pay for those items when they're, when they're updated. On all three plans, I do want to point out though, like Joe mentioned, grants, you guys are pursuing grants, which is great, we're doing the same thing, so every, every opportunity we get, we're gonna apply. If we are successful, what we do is we, we revisit these plans and adjust them accordingly. So I know, for example, on the, on the buildings and grounds side, there was a grant program out a couple of years ago now, but we're hearing it's gonna come back out for improvements to the facility. So we do, if that comes back out, we're gonna, we're gonna apply for that, so. So hopefully take off some of those major items and, and allow us to decrease the, the increases that we're looking for in those items. Another key thing for us was kind of the budget history, so there's a bigger document in there, if you, if you got a small copy, it's hard to read, I know, but it kind of goes through twenty thirteen to present as to really what our budget history was. But again, not gonna be going into detail, so. There's some annual reporting stuff in there, where I'm gonna jump to next is really the, the proposed budget. Pretty substantial increase compared to our history, so I want to kind of go through some of the big ticket items. I'll kind of focus on the expenses first, and then I'll jump back up to the income. So, building maintenance is the third item down on, on the expenses, pretty big increase, a hundred sixty-five percent, and an increase of sixteen thousand five hundred and change. Really comes in two buckets, one bucket is related to plowing and mowing. In the past, the town has just essentially taken care of that function. We had a discussion with the town supervisor, is, you know, is that the, is that the right way to, to allocate these funds, where they're just absorbing all those costs, and he proposed, coming up with a contract with the town at thirteen, it's gonna be thirteen hundred five, thirteen thousand five hundred dollars for year one, put it in the budget, that way the town and the village are paying kind of equal portions based on their budget shares. So that's a big chunk of that increase, the other is just the reality of the cost of doing maintenance items in these buildings are going up and up, so we just need to account for those costs. Fuel, as you pointed out, already that, we're proposing a, a decrease of four thousand dollars, and again, it's really just a factor of cost fuels going down, so we, we felt comfortable there. Firematic insurance, well, we, we're really reflecting what the cost was for twenty-twenty-five, which went up from thirty thousand dollars to just under thirty-six thousand, primarily because we increased all the premiums on our vehicles, because all the vehicle prices have been going up, along with the facility itself, so, you know, so that, that naturally results in some increased premiums for our, our, our budget. Workers' comp did go down a, a little bit, that's really, you know, through the county, and really a factor of, you know, if you have any injuries, and if you don't, you keep seeing lower reduction costs. The long-term maintenance, towards the middle long-term maintenance vehicle replacement, those percentages are basically identical to what you see in the long-term plans. So it's just a carryover, again, to show the money that ultimately, at the end of every year, what we do is if we don't, we don't spend the money on the budget item for that year, so for, for example, this year, we did the floors, we're gonna do the heating system, so that money would come out of there, but if there's no budget items for that year, that money just gets rolled into those long-term accounts. And very similar to what Courtney indicated, we did switch over to that night class as well, so we are gathering some interest for those funds as well, so. Safety equipment, pretty decent change there as well, fifteen point nine percent, primarily related, just the cost of goods. Turnout gears, it is five thousand dollars a set right now for, to equip one of our members. So bunkers, boots, helmet, gloves, nomads, five thousand dollar per set. So this year, when we, we historically done five sets a year, so this year, basically used up our, almost our entire safety budget, just on five sets a gear. The other item is really the major equipment replacement, and again, that's on that replacement line item, and, and according to our budget, it was a five percent increase for the year. So ultimately, like I said, it's a pretty big increase for this year, eleven point two five percent, I think historically over the past, since twenty thirteen, we've been on average- I think historically over the past, uh, since 2013, we've been on average about 3.79% increase, so a pretty pretty big change, but we we try to do our best to keep it as as low as we can, but just the the nature of where things are headed, we felt we needed to increase. Now to go up to income. Um, I'll focus on Raga and Monroe County first. Monroe County, we have through our host agreement, it's just a flat 2% escalation per year. Uh, so really no wiggle room on on that line item. Town of Raga, uh, just a little history for you. We've historically tried to stay at a 2% as well. Primarily because based on the call volume, uh, we don't feel more warranted, but also because the a little bit of concern, they have they have options. They don't have to go with contract with the village and the fire department to pay for these services. They could they could easily switch to Churchville or Town Member. So, you know, we we kind of look at what's a fair number and we'd rather not give up the $29,000 in revenue that helps offset the the little cost here, so. So the big-ticket item, the big items obviously is the town and the village. How the percentages are allocated is based on assessed value valuation. Uh, so every year, we get that number from the county. So that's why you'll see the percent change between the town and the village is different because the assessed valuation's changed every year, so. Ultimately, the impact to the village this year is $10,150.99. So again, a lot of information, um, but felt it was helpful to kind of give you guys an illustration of where we sit, so. Any questions? Concerns? I mean, I I mentioned this to the town last night. Anything after tonight, you know, more than willing to come back and and chat, anything you guys see? Any ideas you guys have that, you know, for us to help get caught down on, also want to listen to that, so.
Are we the primary first call for landfill?
Yes, yep. Yeah, that's our, so we have a we have a carved area in the town of Raga, not just a landfill. Kelly Johnson Road, essentially a little bit down 33, but not very far.
Very thorough.
You always do a nice job with this, very transparent.
Easiest way is my high self is there you go.
You know, we all realize the cost of things going up.
Yeah, that's just.
So right now, you're strictly volunteer?
Yeah.
No, no pay, P. Rock, okay, for now, for now, yeah.
We've actually, but I mean, knock on wood, from a membership standpoint, younger generation, we've been doing very well, very good on response times. I will say, good big change lately, I was, is some of the the line officers we have. We've got a a good good bunch that are really engaging the membership, especially on the training side. So Don Cunningham, for example, PJ Cummings, they've been doing a great job on that stuff and it's been doing a good job just getting, I mean, training, I think you guys are getting 20, 30 people down there every Monday night for a training session. So that's been a a nice nice refresh for the group, so. Yeah, I'll volunteer right now. I know there is discussions at county level somewhat subsidizing that with with pay somewhere. Just the reality, when you have a daytime call, hit and miss. You hope you get enough people. And I know I, not not a local example, but Geneseo, a pretty big community, right? Talk to a member there on Tuesday, they had a structure fire, three people on the first truck. So they really got to rely on, and that was a daytime call, so it's just, it's hit and miss, so.
Mutual aid helps out.
Yep.
Where do you guys stand, membership-wise, as opposed to a lot of the other departments in the county?
I think we're better, better off than than quite a few. I've heard stories of Leroy not being able to get a truck on the road. I think we're we're better off than than most, thankfully.
And also, there's classifications of firefighters. People that are allowed to go inside a working house fire and people that are not allowed, that can only work outside. And our number of interior, what we call interior firefighters, is slightly above average compared to the rest of the county.
It's good to help, yeah.
But again, during the daytime, like Eric says, you're rolling the dice.
Yeah.
And that's why we rely more and more calling what we call automatic mutual aid.
And so where do those, where does the first mutual aid come from? Churchville or or?
We call them both.
Okay.
We will call we'll call Leroy and Churchville both.
And another was the restriction for Churchville being in Monroe County or not?
Yep, yep.
No.
So there's, well, we, there's what we call box books. So dispatch essentially, it's outlined by us. Dispatch, so if they get a structure fire, let's say it's on Kmart Drive. They go in the box book and they they automatically dispatch the agencies we've requested. So so, yeah, like Jim said, it's not just one, it's multiple, just because you never know what Leroy is going to have, right? You never know, so we'd rather get them on the road and turn away than than waiting.
Use Brockport also?
Yep. And Brockport's actually been leaning even heavier on mutual aid lately. They've increased their box book more, so we've been responding up there more and more.
I can tell by the number of calls too, a lot of mutual aid, so.
Yep.
That's what we have to do, though.
Yep.
Same with our village, we use mutual aid.
Yep.
Can't do it alone, so.
So is anything needed from us?
Uh, we have to approve it at a meeting. We can have time to look it over some more and then we'll have it in future meeting, we'll vote on it.
Yeah, the key timing for us is just we have to get contracts in place before the end of the year. Legally, we're not, we cannot reply or respond without an agreement in place. Just our our members aren't protected and that's the main thing for us, so. You don't have a contract, so if we had a call anywhere really and one of our members got hurt, there wouldn't, there would be no coverage for him, so we can't, we can't, can't respond, so. That's just the key time for us.
I never knew the January 1st.
Yeah, yep, yep, for three years, so.
We'd rather not wait till
I have heard, have heard there's been years ago, there was times when it was December 31st and ironing out details, so.
Yeah.
But.
We don't want you to get ulcers.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Again, thank you all for your service.
Yeah, very good job.
For the communities. Thank you enough.
Welcome. Do keep in mind, if you know some folks around the community that are looking for volunteer activities. It wasn't mentioned in not not in the budget, but you know, thinking a bit down the road, as we look at our our calls and the members that are attending, I would say better than half of our, what we'll call gray-haired. You know, so it won't be, it won't be long before we lose, you know, just retirement or whatever, of some key individuals in our department. We are raising up young people, but like Eric said, it's it's tough to keep young people in this community, you know? So as as you hear of people or just think about it, you know, why don't you go down and see what we can do for the fire department? So happy to talk to.
Yeah, that's actually why we did create a kind of a another category member, kind of more of a more of a social-based member, so not a not a fire response member, but someone that just wants to kind of help the you know, working around the fire department, helping on budgets, helping on various activities. Actually, I'm myself almost, I'm still an active member, but honestly, I'm I'm pretty much in that category. I just don't have the time with everything else going on to run many calls, so. That's basically what I'm, my my involvement is on on the business side, so.
And what I do, fire police, you know, I don't have time for all that training to go through interior and all the stuff that the real firemen do, but there's always a need for other types of volunteering down there, so.
I remember I'll stick another thing in my monthly newsletter.
Yep.
You know, I've done that before, but it's been a while, so I'll stick one there.
Yep, wonderful.
I'm always trying to promote.
And we appreciate it, we appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Well, let's, uh, we've got these in front of us, take them home, look them over.
Yeah.
And if you have any questions at our next meeting, uh, we could put it on the agenda for our next meeting to go down it.
Yep.
Unless there's
Okay.
Some questions on it, but if you have some questions, get ahold of myself or Courtney and we can get ahold of them and get answers. Hopefully, uh, it's on the agenda for October meeting, okay? There's no need for a public hearing or anything on that?
No.
Next on the new business is the Resolution 7 of 2025, the delegate to the NIPPA semi-annual meeting. I spoke of that in my mayor's report. And who would be attending those meetings is the village delegate.
So I'll make a motion to delegate Mayor Shimino to the NIPPA semi-annual meeting in 2025.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
And Resolution number 8 of 2025, delegate to the MEUA annual meeting.
I'll make a motion that we accept the Resolution number 8 of 2025 for the delegate to the annual conference, MEUA.
Okay, and that's naming me as the delegate?
And naming Joe as a delegate.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
All in favor? Next thing is a designation of a surplus 250, should be KVA transformer. It's a transformer that we'll no longer have any use for. It used to be at the schoolhouse apartments. It's a single 250, all the transformers we have now are all called dual tap, where we can change them from 4160 to 12470, which is the new voltage that we're going to. So this transformer had to be changed out, so now it will have no use for that transformer in our system at the higher voltage, so. Uh, we'd like to get it designated as surplus and just get what we can out of it.
And where, is there another site for that, like with the vehicles where you can surplus that stuff on?
Uh, that or we sell them to TNR Electric, they buy used.
Oh, okay.
There is a municipality wants it.
Okay. I would say then we we could get a price from TNR and then whatever they
Who wants it?
What does a municipality wants? I think Arcade maybe?
Okay, which is where we, yeah, they've been, we work together with them pretty well, mutually. Okay. You don't get a whole lot. It's amazing how the new equipment costs so much money and you wait so long to get it and then they use stuff they buy for pennies on the dollar and and that's what you get, but it is what it is. So is there a motion to designate that as surplus?
I'll make a motion to designate the surplus.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, what what would you do other than that?
Scrap metal.
Scrap metal. Yeah.
Sit in the back of the power plant for a tiny minute.
Yeah, we're just right, you know, just.
So this way it gets at least out of your house.
It's pretty old now. I mean, you know how long the schoolhouse had been there.
1924.
Well.
That's what it says on the bill.
Yeah, I think that's true. Apartment-wise, so.
Yeah, when whenever they renovated their schoolhouse, that's when that transformer.
We went there, huh?
Fifty years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was probably.
First grade.
I went first, second, and third.
First, second, third, we were the last class there.
I was just the last one, I was the last one.
We closed it, yeah. And then you left us, right? You went somewhere else. It's fine, it's fine.
Okay. Next, we have a Bergen Fire Department member approval. Ian McMillan desires of joining the Bergen Fire Department and he's looking for our blessing.
I I have a question. I don't know whether, when to answer, ask these questions on the record or not, but. There's background checks done on people. Are there physical fitness tests done on them too?
Every year, I think.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So I have to pass some.
They do that in the written to department.
Oh, nice. That makes sense.
That's part of their budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, they do everything, CPR, first aid, all the.
Physical ve- physicals and vaccinations, $5,000. $4,000, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept Ian McMillan for the village Bergen Fire Department.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have a an appointment for the planning board of appeals, not appeals, it's just a planning board. So that's, again, it it should say planning, it should say planning. It's a planning board. We're a short one, full-time member.
What does the planning board do?
They oversee all their local businesses that want to come into the village.
Change of use, signs.
They must work with the zoning.
Zoning, construction.
Follow the comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
It's the first place where somebody wants to make changes here, they have to come to the planning board for approval.
So is this for a a sub or a full-time?
This is full-time.
Full-time. And who is that?
His name is Tim Quirk.
Oh, sure. He's in the old doctor's house around the corner where Alquist, next next door to Alquist.
The Bailey's.
Okay, good guy.
Is there a motion?
I made the motion that we accept Tim Quirk as
Planning board?
A full-time planning board member.
Okay, is there a second?
All seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Now, when we approve that, is that's effective like right now?
He'll come in and take the oath and Courtney will sign him up as soon as he takes the oath.
Okay, sure. Is there any vacancies on either of the planning and zoning board, right now?
We have two two vacancies on the zoning.
So we'll have one alternate for the planning board and then two alternate, seven one permanent, I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Okay.
We do have a couple more interested. We're hoping to get on board, so it's it's kind of tough getting people to fill these positions.
Yeah.
So, but we're we're getting there.
Well, Todd and I can go do both, just one in.
Yeah. Unfortunately, they don't allow that.
I know.
Okay, moving on to our old business, our noise ordinance.
So I did contact Arcade. I have a copy of what I think is their noise ordinance. I have their website, but it does not mention anything about decibel.
Okay.
So I called and talked to the clerk. She was going to talk to the BPW supervisor. I was expecting to call at a time for her to either find the decibel thing or to tell me that they just not signed up.
Okay.
If you go online, I've gone online, looked this up.
Yeah.
The low level for Jake breaks is 80 decibels.
Okay.
But a lot of them are 100, 100 plus. I think that 80 is is our threshold, you know, if it gets over 80, that's when it becomes a nuisance.
Yeah, yeah. According to the lady at the county, she said if you if you even had a party next door and and had the police come, they need they need that level to be able to measure. You know, if they just say it's too loud next door, it's nebulous, it's kind of arbitrary. It's like, well, what's too loud? But if we have something that defines that, as you said, 80, then they can say, hey, it's, you know, we've got this thing that says you're 800, shut it down, you know, or get a ticket.
Do the police carry those? Decibel levels?
She believes that if they do a patrol, they do, yes, if they're if they're looking for it, yeah, they will.
Yes, if they're looking for it, yeah, they will. So if we're having an issue up here, we put signs and stuff, they'll probably patrol it.
I would have to contact the sheriff's office and see if they do have a decibel meter.
Yeah, yeah, so I can do that if you want to follow up on it, sure.
Do that, follow up.
So I'm gonna talk to Cast Island Perry, too, because I'm still at the lake down there, and I'll see what they have, if that's okay, for if they have a level, special level for noise.
They monitor everything in Perry.
Well, you know, you've got people on the lake, you know, they got noise levels that they have to maintain.
We have to even have an equipment we can borrow.
That's a good point, too. Town supervisor for Cast Island, right up the road, I bought my cottage from him. So we have a pretty good rapport, and we'll see what they have there.
Okay, if you could do that, come back, and then we can finalize what we wanna do with this, moving forward.
Yeah, again, she said unless we have a number, it can't do much. And they would be reluctant to put signs up unless we had that, that they can enforce it.
What if we call them, our board passed 80 decibels.
Sign them down, as long as you have a number.
Like you said, come online, it's 80's the bottom. These trucks that aren't tuned, the exhaust aren't tuned, and they're 100, it's a nuisance.
But is 80 too loud for people that live right there? I don't know, you know?
Yeah, how do you make that?
I mean, if they all of a sudden hit that thing and, you know, is that 80? Is that, who knows what that is, you know?
It's a kind of a slippery slope, because I don't even know, like a lawnmower, I don't know how many decibels a lawnmower is.
Harleys that roar.
You know, yeah, Harleys, yeah.
Yep.
You know, I don't wanna have a lawnmower, and oh, hey, it's over the decibel, you can't do that, you know?
Kind of local law, state, specifically Jake breaks that exceed X decibels, and not necessarily leave it up to every single.
Right, we would have to make it specific.
Yeah, yeah. Well, let me, I'll find out what they have.
Good question. Perry's might be a good one.
Yeah, I think so.
Maybe we don't have to reinvent the wheel there, you know?
Yes.
Okay, yep.
Well, I appreciate your patience on that. We really wanna hopefully get something done on town lines, so.
Or they, basically, when they're coming over the hill, coming down the hill to stop 262.
Going up the hill is a problem, because obviously, they're not braking, but you would think they slow down with that. But they come over that hill very quickly. I mean, if you're, if you're not looking to the right and left and right again, you're gonna get clipped. I mean, it's nasty. So we actually did some bushes trimming in that area, and we're gonna do some more. We're gonna trim back, because George Hoke's bush is there, you can't see, you gotta get way out.
I think the guys cut.
They did cut some.
They cut?
Yeah, it's not enough. The bushes, you know, they really need to be trimmed back. I talked to Lynn, she said, hey, help yourself, you know, go right ahead. So we need to trim that back. But again, when they go over the hill, and then they come down, that's when they hit it.
There, again, the problem there is their speeding coming into the village.
Exactly.
Because they should be slowing down already where they don't need to take break. Just going up the hill should be, you know, slowing down.
The 30-mile marker is still down the hill there, yeah? Yeah, coming in.
It's, you know, it's speeding.
I noticed that when they come into the village, too, down the rural road. Or we are here on Main Street, but over behind our house, like coming down.
Buffalo.
Buffalo Road towards the 30-mile. But the trucks, I don't notice it as often, because I don't think we get as many trucks down there.
No, they just do 63 there and doesn't matter.
Okay, probably the other floor.
Well, they left.
Okay, anything else before we have a motion to adjourn? Okay, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Ted?
I'll say.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Very good.
Thank you all.